Seven o'clock, so I think we'll start the meeting. It's a call order. Please join me in the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States and America. In the free public, for which it stands, for a nation, for God, for the visible, for liberty and justice.
The recorder is here, but we're just not a person.
Oh, that's why she was so.
Having called the meeting or order, I'll ask if there's any additions to the agenda, or any declaration of ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, et cetera. Here and then speaking move on. Is there any presentations or comments from the public? Don't like it. Reese, do you have anything? No?
Hello?
Hello? Well, that will move on to the consent agenda. What would you guys like to do with the consent agenda?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
There's been a motion to second the consent, to accept the consent agenda as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving us on to the first item on the agenda, it's unfinished business and consideration of adoption of a property maintenance code. Dan, turn it over to you.
Thank you. We were before you in July and then again in August to talk about this issue, and I won't rehash all of the issues that were discussed at that time, but at the August 1st meeting, staff was requested to create an ordinance for further review and discussion by the council. You've got a draft in front of you. There's really no change to the code from what you saw before. It's just the creation of all of the recitals and the ordinance language itself. The proposal would be to, if the council chooses to go with it, would be to enact into the city's code standards for residential rental housing and a procedure for enforcement of those standards. The standards that are proposed reflect state law, but are a little bit more detailed as to what the general requirements of habitability are in state law. And also establishes an annual fee to be collected per rental dwelling unit that would offset the cost to the city for enforcement and administration. And with that, really leave it to you all to discuss and decide whether you want to go forward. I will say, as I said in my written report and as I mentioned last time we talked about this, would suggest that prior to enactment, if you want to go forward with it, that we do at least a public hearing, though one is not required by law, and perhaps some other outreach, particularly to the owners of rental property, so they understand what the code will require.
Any questions?
If this were in force, say, 10 years ago, how often would it have been used, you think?
It's hard for me to answer that, Ralph, because without it being in place, there's no reason for someone to call City Hall to complain. I would say that we probably, that I'm aware of, in planning or public works, we probably get one or two phone calls a year asking about questions that this may relate to.
Of course.
How many come into the PD, I don't know. And how many, you know, again, aren't made because there is no.
No outlook.
Right. There is no code. There's nothing we can do about it. You know, who really knows?
My only concern with this is that per-unit fee. The idea of having standards for habitability in rentals makes very good sense to me. But, I don't know, I'm, hopefully these other three can convince me that.
Does it?
That the fee will be useful to us somehow. I'm not sure how that. I mean, if we only get one, you know, we only get one, and we've got all of these apartments giving us $50 a year, or whatever number it is we come up with, that seems like an awful lot of money to enforce one, one report.
Yeah.
Or two or three.
Yeah, I would agree. If it's that few, then the fee's probably not necessary. And if the fee is the issue, the fee could be removed from the code, from the proposed code.
I guess the other.
That's why when you received this information back in July and August, the fee section was highlighted.
Yeah. The other way that I could see us paying for this would be through penalties. You know, there's the 250 that it talks about in here. Well, maybe that could be five.
Right.
You know? I mean, if, particularly if we have a landlord who's a problem, I think, I think it would be incumbent for that landlord to kind of get their act together, so to speak.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you. I have the same concern, the per-unit concern. If you have 15 apartments in an apartment complex, and each unit's $25 or whatever going to charge them, and we're trying to get them to comply on his property as a whole. There was a question I had Dan about. I'm trying to find it here. It said, oh, here it is. Under compliance, page 67B, it says, "If a notice and order was recorded against the property, housing division staff."
Oh, that needs to be changed. That was something I missed from the codes that I copied it from.
I kind of figured it was not a new position we were creating, wanted to make sure.
No.
Would we be able to leave the fee part open so that we may impose a fee by resolution? So then, maybe for the time being, we could say, okay, we don't want to impose a fee, but down the road sometime, we could decide to impose something?
Yeah, I, I mean, as drafted, the code would say there is a fee to be set by resolution. The resolution could have a fee of zero, or just never be adopted. So it, I think even the language that's there accomplishes that.
Great.
Or we could say, "An annual fee may be imposed by council resolution."
I think it's really hard for people to find rental housing right now in town, and these costs would most likely just be passed through to them, and then they'd have increased costs.
Yeah. The cost, the cost in Corvallis is something like $13 per year, per dwelling unit.
Okay.
In Eugene, I think it's 10. Gresham was as much as like 50, but, you know, still only $4 a week. I mean, $4 a month.
Yes, but.
Right, yes. It is a cost that goes to the landlord.
And I think my concern with that too as well was reading the appeal. It was $50 to appeal to the council and/or the city administrator for the person filing the complaint. Is that the way I read it?
Appeal.
Because, I mean, that could be, $50 is a substantial amount of money for someone on a fixed income having these types of issues with the landlord. And I guarantee you that.
Yes, the code does have that fee in it, but again, that's something we could take out.
Exactly. That $50 would pretty much negate the whole purpose of this. I mean, that's almost a penalty to somebody like, the council says, that is on low-income housing anyway.
That's an appeal by the landlord. It could be an appeal by the tenant also.
Could be appealed by the tenant as well.
If the enforcement officer determined there was no violation.
So Chief, can you, can you tell us what this will enable you to do from a position that you can't do right now?
Perfect example is the, is the properties that we're dealing with currently, where we are really stuck. We can deal with the life safety issues of the fire, the fire code, but to get them to fix some of the other maintenance issues that are going on, that are, that are safety issues for the tenants as well, we're really kind of stuck with.
Right. And they're, they're really habitability issues. I mean, there's a unit there that's had a broken window for over a year.
There's no balcony, isn't it?
Yeah. And that window is still, is still broken out. I drove past it yesterday and it was still broken out.
Anything else? Was there a spot in here that we would give some type of designation to the landlord that he meets the criteria set forth in the code, and we could put it on our website somewhere? Or how would we, how would we make that known, that this particular landlord's in compliance for people that are potentially renting from them?
There's not a provision for any type of inspection or certification unless there is, there's no provision for inspection unless there is a complaint.
Right.
There is no, I guess the assumption is.
They are until.
Property is in compliance until it's found not to be.
I think that was one of the highlights of that article you shared with us. Keith, in Albany, they were going to put some kind of designation being approved. I think that's what I, the way I read it.
Yeah, they're doing, yeah, they're doing something very similar, but just a little bit different. I mean, I think that's, yeah, I remember reading that same thing.
So do you need a decision from us, or?
Well, I think at this point, we'd like to know whether, you know, I think Dan's idea of doing a public, I mean, we discussed this, we understand that, but doing a public hearing and to do notices and, you know, kind of say this is what our intent is, I think that would be good. So, you know, to give direction of saying, yes, we'd like to move forward with that, or just even saying, we know we have, we feel like we discussed this enough at this point, you know, just go ahead and let's go forward. So I'll leave to the council how you want to, want to handle that.
I like the idea of having a public hearing.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. There you go.
Okay. Would you like anything done with the fee section before it's returned to you?
I'd like to be able to set fees by resolution.
And that's what, that's what the current draft says.
But also that $50 filing fee for appeal.
Right, the appeal fee.
Yeah.
Drop that.
Or say that it would be set by resolution, so we could have one at some point if we want.
Okay, that's good.
And then drop the per-unit fee for right now, correct. And then do we want to increase the fine? I know that was one of the discussions as well, to make it sort of, to 500 or I think 1,000. I mean, currently with, with the issue we're dealing with, there's, there's a fine of $1,000.
$1,000. $1,000 would match what our other, our other fee structure is for issues of this nature.
Right. The 250 that's mentioned here is the penalty for not paying your $10 fee on time.
Gotcha.
That's the incentive to comply, so that we don't have to send out repeat notices.
And I think Council Lewis made a good point about, let's, have it evaluated after it's in place for, to see how many of these are actually going to field and have to respond to. So we're good with that, then? You're going to?
It seems like it would make sense to move all the fees to be set by resolution, so that we could.
Right.
Change them later.
Yeah. I agree.
Got it.
Awesome. So we can move on to new business, and that would be the criteria for approval of applications for official zone map amendments.
That'd be me again.
Yep.
So when we were discussing Dick Koenig's zone map amendment on East Sandy Am Street, a number of council members expressed frustration over my interpretation over the inability to judge, shall we say, the overall appropriateness of the zone change and the impacts on the neighborhood beyond the, shall we say, more objective criteria that are currently in the code. I've reviewed the criteria for approval for zone map amendments in, I think it was six or eight other city codes, and have a couple of recommendations to make. And otherwise, I'm open to whatever you saw from other cities that you'd like to sort of pick and choose from that meet your concerns. But one of the, one of the recommendations that I have to make is that I think one of the sources of frustration in the last case that we had was that they had applied for a zone map amendment and did not also apply at the same time for site development review. So while the applicant said, oh, this is my intention, he didn't really, he didn't have a site plan, we didn't really know what the impacts on the neighbors were going to be, all we were doing is changing the color on the zoning map without really knowing what the impacts of that was. I checked with the city's land use attorney, and he didn't have any problem with the idea of requiring a concurrent application for development to accompany the zone map amendment If you want to proceed with that, I would leave an exception to allow for someone who's got a non-conforming use today and really just wants the zone map changed to make that conforming. I don't know who was on the council when we did that six or eight years ago for property at First, and I think it was First in Virginia, where there's a multifamily house that was zoned, multifamily building that was zoned commercial. So that was a non-conforming use. And we changed the zoning to put it into the downtown residential mixed-use zone. So again, there was no development proposed, or wasn't going to be any development following, so it would make sense to provide an exception in that case. The other ish, the other recommendation is that to craft language that, that includes a new criterion for compatibility with the potential development with the existing neighborhood development patterns. That, you know, that may get a little subjective and be up to a lot of interpretation. I think we can craft language, I mean, and you'll see that other cities around have a similar criteria to that, and that I think we can craft language that provides guidance to both the applicant and to council as to how that will be applied. And then other than that, I'm open to hearing your ideas for, if there's other things that you saw that in the cities that I included, that you like and would like to include.
I think the way we do it now is fine. I do think that there should be, as you said, what are we going to do with this property when we get the zone changed? That should be there, so people can see it. But I think generally, I think it's fine the way we do it.
I agree with you.
I mean, I like the objective criteria.
I don't think it would hurt to add a compatibility component, but I still think we would have passed the one we okayed based on compatibility.
Well, he met all the criteria.
Yeah.
He met all the criteria, so I, we almost didn't have a choice.
That's it. That's exactly it.
Yeah.
We didn't have a choice.
Yeah.
And I don't think that gave the, the community members in town an option. Took, I mean, they could express their frustrations with it, but their option is tough. I mean, that's the way I, that's the way I took it.
So, so do you think this would?
I don't know.
Make that better?
I don't know. I do like this piece from Salem, but this is, this is what I was trying to, maybe, maybe this sentence really articulates it for me, and I'll make sure I want to read this correctly. The very last sentence on Salem's, Salem's, he says, "The greater the impact of the proposed zone change on the area, the greater the burden on the applicant to demonstrate their criteria are satisfied." He clearly satisfied all six of the criteria we had in there, but again, for me, that didn't take any consideration of the people that are living in the neighborhood already.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm just trying to find a balance of input from both, both sides. That's all I'm trying to do. And it's interesting to see that all the towns around us have, in my mind, that.
Yeah, something like that.
I think it's, I think it's compatible.
Dan, let me ask you this. The concurrent piece, does that save the planning commission or yourself any time, effort, whatever, when it comes to? So now that Mr. Koenig got his own change, he's going to have to come back again and go through the entire process again.
Correct.
I do like the concurrent piece, simply for that reason, that it cuts down on duplicity.
Right. It, it would save a little bit of effort, because it would be one public hearing that's, you know, another recent example was Mr. Martinak's zone change on West Washington Street. When we did that, he, he did submit concurrent applications. That was actually a comprehensive plan map amendment, a zone map amendment, and a partitioning, all at the same time. So it was one public hearing before the planning commission that looked at all three applications. They, they did their job. The comprehensive plan map and zone map amendments came to the council. Council held their public hearing, and then, and then it was done. And you're right, the, the potential drawback is if it is really a, if it's got something that is potentially controversial, and particularly if it's also a comprehensive plan map amendment going from residential to commercial, let's say, then the applicant may be a little hesitant to spend the money on all of the engineering that's necessary for the site plan, to develop the site plan.
Right.
Without knowing whether the zone map amendment is going to go through.
I got you.
That, that to me, the, probably the most significant drawback to requiring a concurrent application is it, it does put all of those expenses upfront on the applicant without knowing whether they're going to get the zone changed.
I can see that. I, I think part of the issue for me is what it does, is it reduces the rumor mill and the innuendo and the unknown, the fear of the unknown. A lot of the people that came here were the fear of the other. I heard it's going to be 17 houses, or whatever the number may be.
Right.
So I'm trying to figure out a way to, like to have it.
And I think, but, and I think, I think having the concurrent application helps resolve that. Now, the applicant's not bound to do that development. They could come back next month with an amended plan, or a whole new plan, or just never build it. We, you know, we did a zone, you know, again, just in my 10 years here, we did a zone change for Brian Wicksum, his property at Jefferson and.
Sixth.
And Sixth. And nothing ever happened there. He had great plans, and then the economy fell apart. But we changed the zoning from residential to commercial for him. That was, so, you know, they're not bound to actually execute the plan they get approved, but at least it gives the city officials and it gives the public an idea of, here's what is planned, and here's what you're likely to see.
Well, that makes me think maybe they shouldn't be doing it concurrently, because what if they come and say, oh, yeah, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and then as soon as they get the zone map approved, amendment approved, go and decide to do something else.
But they could do that anyway.
Right, they can, right, they can do that anyway.
Well, that's why I think we should look at the zone map on its own, without, I mean, yeah.
How often does this come up?
In the, in the 10 years I've been here, I think there's been five applications for a zone map amendment.
So it's not a big deal.
No, it's not a big.
I guess I put myself in their shoes again. I just feel powerless from a resident standpoint, that I don't have a say in what goes on in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
But how much say should you have in someone else's property, and what they're doing with it? You know, there should be some autonomy too.
Sure.
This is my property, and I want to develop it, and I want to, you know, abide by the rules, but.
But we're changing what that property currently is though, and by doing that, we're affecting everybody else in that surrounding deal. That's it. It's tough.
It is. It is. And, and, you know, I think you take the example of this last application where people bought, you know, bought into a single-family neighborhood with the understanding that the property next door was zoned single-family. One of those houses is less than a year old, and now it's not going to be single-family. Now, what's, is what's going to be there going to be terrible? We don't know, because we don't know what's going to happen, other than, than, you know, Mr. Koenig said, "My intention is to build a triplex." That's all we know.
That's what I was getting at. I mean, I knew full well, or I didn't know what the zoning next to me was at the time I bought my house. I assumed, because the nature of the congruency of the neighborhood was going to be another couple more houses. But now I know.
Right.
But just to your point, if I go in there buying it, knowing full well that lot's going to be a single-family house, great, that's why I bought it. That's what they tracked us of the lot, right? Or they tracked us of the area. And now the tenant says, it fits, and we're changing it, because he owns it, he asked the city to change it. And us five up, sitting up here on the council, overrule the wishes of the neighborhood, that's a struggle for me. And we, and we deem that from a quasi judicial standpoint, because they met the criteria of the six steps.
Right.
That's all we're looking at.
That's right.
We're not taking anything else into consideration, other than the six criteria.
Right.
But the statute says it has to be objective criteria.
Yeah.
That's what we're stuck with.
Right. That's why I was looking for a mechanism to maybe have a little bit more.
Right. I, I don't, I don't know whether this, I don't know whether the statute for, requires objective criteria for a zone map amendment. It certainly does for resident, for housing development, or what the statute calls needed housing, which is defined pretty much as all housing. When you look at the criteria that, that some of the neighboring communities have adopted, you know, there's some pretty subjective things here. You know, Dallas, the change is in the public interest with regard to neighborhood and community conditions. Salem, the proposed zone is equally or better suited for the property than the existing zone. And then goes on to describe what that means. So those, those provide, you know, those types of criteria provide the council with some pretty broad latitude. I mean, it's not much different than, than looking at our criteria for approval for an annexation, you know, one of which is, there is the need for the land in the city. And, and there's absolutely no guidance to either the council or, or the applicant as to what that means. So it really, really leaves it up to you to determine, do we need this land, or do we not need this land? So I, I don't think there's any problem with a, with a subjective criteria, but. any problem with a, with a subjective criteria, but, um, without it, we're, we've got those six that we have today. So where would you like to go? Include the, include a requirement for a concurrent development application or not?
I, I personally don't think that's a good idea at this point, the concurrent piece because of the burden it places on the.
Right. Now, after discussing it, I would concur with that as well.
I just don't feel like, the way it's set up now, we have the ability to actually be representatives of the people. I certainly didn't feel that way in the last hearing. Yet all those folks here who live in town, who are coming to the representatives that they elected to try to help in a situation, express their, um, their frustrations or their concerns with their property and their neighborhood, and we were pretty much bound by the objective criteria just to make a ruling from a quasi judicial standpoint.
So did you like Salem's number two?
Yeah, I did. Yeah. The one with the compatible? Yeah. I like that.
So who determines the greater impact?
That, that's ultimately gonna be up to the council and it's gonna need to be based on information provided on the record.
So then, let's continue using Mr. Koenig. And let's say we, we go, we now have seven criteria with this being number seven, and he gets the other six, but he doesn't get number seven because, um, we decide that what he's trying to do isn't for the greater good because we have a whole roomful of people telling us it's not for the greater good. It's, it's difficult for me to, to say no to a guy because, because of that. I don't know. I mean, he's already met all these other criteria that, I don't know.
I see what you're saying. I do. But, uh, in my mind, it goes back to, and this is what I was trying to articulate without being too, without being too harsh on people that live outside the community. That wasn't my intent. What I was always saying was, there's gotta be a voice for the people that live there that are being affected by it.
Mm-hmm.
Having owned that property and his options of developing the property are to develop it as it was zoned, and he's asking us for a zone change, and yes, he met the criteria based on those six options. So there's what, that's why I struggle with the weighing. So what the community wants versus what he wants. That's what, that's why, that's why we're at this discussion.
Right.
You're right. I don't, I mean, six out of seven, and then what is that, I mean, what has that weigh?
Yeah. Right.
On the future of us, people that are sitting there, the future.
To, to a certain extent, the, the question of how you make the decision of whether something is compatible may not necessarily be all that different than how you make a decision as to whether anticipated services can accommodate potential development. There's information presented to you. Someone could question whether the pipe is big enough or whether there's enough water or not enough water. Same with, with transportation impacts. Um, we, my experience here in Staton is we never get in, I've never, we've never had an application where the neighbors show up with, with their own expert witnesses, so, so it's called, but actually are presenting, um, analysis different than what the applicant's analysis or the staff's analysis is. It's always just, we don't like that, or we're, or we're afraid of that. So I think there is the opportunity, even with some of these more objective criteria, and even if you had a criteria about compatibility, there is the opportunity for the neighborhood to come and present information, and that's really the key about whether the application is compatible or not compatible. Even if you had, um, a compatibility criterion and all the neighbors came and just said, oh, we're not quite sure we like this, or we're concerned what the impact will be, that doesn't, I don't think that would provide adequate information for you to make a finding that it's not compatible.
I agree.
Right.
I agree.
So it, it really, it, it will need to be an information-based testimony, and that's usually what's lacking when the neighbors show up at a hearing for anything.
But I know that we've had things at the planning commission that were voted down because enough of the neighbors came. I mean, we don't have a skate park because of that.
Right. Right. We don't have a development up on the other side of East Pine Street.
Right.
Because there were 65 people in this hearing room before the planning commission and the application never even made it to the city council. Not to mention, the economy fell apart soon afterwards, but.
Right.
Ralph, I see your point. I just, it's tou, it's tough.
I don't want to say.
I mean, you, you summarized it pretty well. The people that are coming are, are going off of emotion.
Yeah. Right.
Instead of presenting factual arguments against the criteria.
Right.
To deny the.
Yeah. And in, in the case of Mr. Koenig's application, none of the testimony addressed any of the criteria for approval. And even if you had a criterion about compatibility, may not have adequately addressed that. It was, oh, I live in a single-family house. I don't want a triplex behind me.
So I guess then the question would be, how do we get past that? How do we get neighbors to be more professional in their, in their approach to these things as opposed to being, oh God, they're gonna put a, you know, a whatever in my backyard?
Yeah. Um, I don't know how you do that, particularly in a community like this. In other communities, the neighbors will go hire their own engineers or, or, or an attorney will be representing them, who knows what needs to be done. That's not, that's not gonna happen here, except perhaps in selected neighborhoods. Um, and otherwise people, my experience here as well as other communities I've worked, people come to the public hearings and go, I don't like this, or I'm worried about this, without addressing the criteria for approval. And, and, you know, our notice that goes out says, these are the criteria. Your testimony needs to address them, or, or it won't, it won't be worth much. I mean, it doesn't say it that way, but that's what it says.
Generally what it comes to.
Yeah.
I think, I think the struggle, I mean, what you guys have is, is two classic competing values in public administration. It's the individual rights of the property owner. It's the social equity of, of, of the citizens in the community. Ultimately, it's, it's gonna be the decision of where you want to place priority on those values. And that's, I think it's where the struggle's really coming from, from, you know, hearing it from you guys. And I hate putting it in like a public administration, technical, esoteric kind of way, but that's really sort of what I think the struggle is right now, is those two competing, competing values and trying to balance how you want to do that. I'm just saying that to maybe give an idea of, of where we're at and how we can maybe overcome it.
So let's say, let's say we took Salem's number two, which says, "The greater the impact of the proposed zone change on the area, the greater the burden on the applicant to demonstrate that the criteria are satisfied." How would that impact, do you think, the audience? Because this will be now one of the, this will be number seven, so when they get their notice, this will be on there for them to take into consideration.
Yeah. Actually, this probably wouldn't be a number seven because as, as Salem has structured it, number one is it says, "It shall be granted if all the following criteria are met." So that's what lays out the criteria, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Right.
And then two says, "The bigger your impact, the greater your burden to show that the criteria above are met." So, um, it, it may give, um, the neighborhood or the neighbors or the opponents a, a better opportunity to say, "The applicant hasn't met their burden of proof." And it is the applicant's burden to provide that information. It's not the neighbor's burden. It's not staff's burden to, to provide information that shows the criteria are not met. So it, it may give the opportunity for a more savvy, uh, neighbor to say, "Mr. Koenig's having a big impact on our neighborhood and he hasn't met his burden of proof of showing that criterias three and four have been met." But it doesn't change the criteria.
No.
So that doesn't do anything?
I, I don't think it does much. I mean, the applicant's got, the applicant's got the burden of proof already.
Yeah.
Period. And, and by saying, uh, because you're gonna have a big project, your burden is bigger, I, I don't think says anything. The applicant's got the burden of showing that A through G, in Salem's case, are met.
What about, uh, under number one, A, uh, second paragraph for Salem? Is that any different?
That, that is different than, different than anything that we have in our code today.
Because it talks about the compatible, would be compatible with the vicinity's development pattern.
Right. So.
Would that have afforded that neighborhood a little bit different angle?
I think it would have provided the opportunity to argue that what Mr. Koenig is proposing is not compatible. I'm not quite sure it would definitely be a slam dunk.
Sure.
Argument in that case.
Sure.
Because in that case, we, you've got multifamily, you've got medium density.
Right next door.
Right next door, and you've got a couple of duplexes, and you've got multifamily across the street, and, and you're, we're really talking about changing the zone line from one side of the property to the other side of the property, not like you were creating a new zoning district in the middle of, of something.
And it's still to poke holes in the six criteria.
Right.
Solidly poke holes in them.
I, I like what we have. I would like to have a compatibility, um, aspect added to ours just so we don't have islands of.
Yeah.
Something in the middle of.
Agree. Mm-hmm. Agree.
So.
So kind of along the language of what Salem's one, A, II says, when you're talking about compatibility.
Yes. That's what we're talking about?
What, what Dan suggested too, um, the compatibility of the potential development under the new zoning to the existing development patterns in the vicinity.
Yeah. So that, that was sort of a general concept as a recommendation without picking somebody's.
I'll let you.
But yeah, then we can play with that language.
Okay.
If that's the direction you want to go.
Does Salem's language sort of kind of meet that of the one I just described? Demonstration that there's been a change in the economic, demographic, or physical character of the vicinity such that the proposed zone would be compatible with the vicinity's development pattern?
That's what I have highlighted, yeah.
Yeah. But doesn't that, Dan, does that seem kind of along those lines?
Yeah, that's along those lines, as is their, their, um, sub three there, that, that proposed zones equally or better suited for the property, uh, based on the physical characteristics and the uses allowed in the proposed zone are logical with surrounding land uses.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, but I think both two and three get to that compatibility issue. Um, and, and there were some others, you know, from, again, other, um, communities around, um, where was?
Dallas, Florida.
So I'll, I'll come back, I guess the question is, would you like me to come back to you with language before it goes to the planning commission?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's important to have the full council.
So we'll be back in a couple of weeks with a suggestion.
Yeah.
To address the compatibility issue, and we will not deal with the concurrent application.
Thank you.
That's what I heard.
Right.
The majority of you saying.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you.
Thanks. I wanted to make a statement for the record that Councilor Gladwell and Mayor Porter both excused tonight. Forgot to do at the beginning.
So benevolent of you.
Oops. Yeah. Sorry about that. Um, this is another chance for presentation or comments from the public.
Can I comment about that thing?
Sure. Go ahead, Reese.
Um, do I say the Reese Bordeaux, 525 Mill Stream Woods? I guess even though we try and say that we're different than other areas, I was thinking as a neighbor of Sublimity, and I always ask people when I meet them at anything, if they live in Staton or Sublimity or where they live, and then how they chose it. And I meet a lot of people who tell me they chose Sublimity because it has housing and not the apartment, the types of things that we have, um, not the stores and the issues. I mean, in reality, there are what, 2,000 people there and they have one officer. We have 8,000 people, so four times more. And how many officers?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So I think that there is more stuff that goes on in Staton. A lot more stuff. Um, I live where there are apartments right outside of me, and I don't think there's anybody here who would want, and, and was it not a three-plex and a two-plex, Dan? So five places? Not just a triplex. Wasn't that right?
Well, no. There, there is the theoretical potential, perhaps, for that parcel to be partitioned into two and for one of those lots to have a triplex and the other to have a duplex.
Okay. I thought, I thought that's what he did say.
But the applicant said his intention is to build a triplex.
Just a triplex. Okay. So, um.
But he hasn't, but again, he hasn't submitted an application to do anything.
Okay. So I really would appreciate it if you do put language in that does something maybe a little like Salem. I also think that bigger cities spend a lot of time exploring and, and there are reasons why they add that kind of language. And I think maybe the homes up by the hospital, maybe behind the park, they might get an engineer, or they might come in with somebody who would speak for them. But I don't think the majority of neighborhoods around here have people that can do that. They aren't going to do that. They don't even, they wouldn't even probably know how to begin. And, and I think they do vote for you, and I think it's great if you do speak for the majority of people. Thanks.
Thanks, Reese. Um, that leaves us with business from the city administrator.
Um, so we'll look at the two items tonight and make some adjustments to our future agenda items to try to get these back as, as soon as we can. So, um, we'll take that. And we have our staff meeting tomorrow. We'll look and try to let you know when we'll get both of these back. I think the first item, just to give us time to notify, might be probably initially thinking sometime in November. Um, we'll see how fast we can get that, that second item back as well. So just wanted to kind of let you know what the thought process was as we do that. So we talked some internally about that as well. So we might make some adjustments to the future agenda just to handle some of those things. That's all I have.
Thanks. Uh, mayor's gone, so we will skip that. Business from the council. Anybody? Uh, future agenda items are cost and revenue alternatives on October 17th and financial policies. Other than that, meetings adjourned?